This is fun.
Oh, they're not.
This is like a fun game to recognize people, yeah, from the...
There, this one or this one?
This one or...
Can we talk about one outside? I've seen people really like the outside. I don't know what it is.
Are we good now?
We're good.
I think you want every other room.
Oh, exactly.
So, no?
Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
That's on the very contentious side.
Sorry, sorry.
Not many of them. We got 26 minutes.
Thank you.
You're not running any of the post reports? Uh, yeah, we took, uh, three yesterday.
What's, hello, hi.
CDC, they're taking care of two million.
Yes, because I was surprised you know this, because it was very, very...
Oh, that part of the school? Uh, no, they're, they're just, uh, it's a center, it's a business, the daycare business. Oh.
She's a little...
Um, how do I write how many?
I'm just writing.
Oh, not bad, aren't you?
I wasn't gonna say anything.
I just started to feel like, you know, this is over here.
I don't believe they have to do that.
Is there a reason we keep robust or shit?
Bring the heat in. Yeah.
I mean, do you want to keep mine?
It's more like shush, shut up.
Doesn't matter, people just peers through windows.
We used to have...
I noticed you had like... The other day. Yes.
So, Hillary, you're going under the manager's report. It's, as well as, uh, here, maybe, and then for sure, too, whatever. That part about... Yeah, so... Yes, sir.
How you doing, Drake?
Fantastic, sir, how are you?
Good, good.
Part of it's just masks.
Hey, thanks for returning that call today.
Oh, good, thank you.
I don't like doing that without talking to you first, so...
We have a good conversation.
Did you?
Yeah.
Good. He's a good guy.
Yeah.
You saw me try to get out.
He recognized her under the mask.
What's happening, man?
They, they recognized her under the mask. This mask has gotten me crazy.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Great. Thank you for the...
Oh, yeah.
Uh, are you, so, Hillary, you're figuring out...
Thanks.
Are you with us today?
Yeah. Did I pass the test?
Should we be worried? He did do it.
Well, welcome.
Are you definitely...
How long have you worn that mask? Are you losing oxygen to the brain?
Andy, you might do your manager's report first, and then do that.
Why don't I do it after? I would save the time. Yes, I do.
Before we get started, again, if anybody would like to speak tonight on an agenda item, um, there's a sign-up sheet out, out there at the, uh...
On the agenda, Dr. Lake, for instance, Dr. Dawson, and other alligators folks you don't need to sign in, but if there's something, if you're a member of the public who wishes to speak on a topic on the agenda, we ask that you sign in. Any last chances? Right, going on? I'll come to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir, you're welcome.
Oh, will it? I do, I'm there. Are you sure it's not the gum you're looking at? When you look at it?
Thank you, sir. Is that the second row of the column at all?
No. It's every other row.
Hey, Ron, you're in the seat over here if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you.
Just ask to say two...
Thank you, Ma'am.
So, the college, is that? College.
Uh, so Becky, she's, she can cross her off, she's gonna be presenting with Hillary, I think.
Okay.
Becky, we're, we're crossing you off with the Hillary.
Do whatever you want, Andy.
All right.
Katie, ready?
I'm ready.
Andy, ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna call in to order a roll call, please.
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. Uh, if you would stand for Pledge of Allegiance, if I can, right?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you, if you have a cellphone, iPad, iPod, or watch your unit, I appreciate it, I'll try to remind you to turn your cellphone on if you need it. Public comment on the agenda, um, I have a couple individuals, Bill, if you would just take the podium and give us your address, and he is speaking on behalf of something that's on the agenda tonight. And before you start, Bill, council, um, I don't, normally we give a five-minute presentation, I don't usually enforce that, but how does council wanna to do that? I'm gonna give you the opportunity. If not, we'll just let him speak.
Yeah, that's what we did at the last meeting.
Thank you, other questions? Go ahead, Bill.
Well, I, the question that I had is, it looks like it's, uh, been answered under communication, the, uh, the NAACP, Drake Parker, has sent a message, I hope that the council will meet with the NAACP and listen carefully to what Mr. Parker or any other member has to say. I'd just like to observe that I've spent a number of years of my life putting myself in the way of the tension that exists between blacks and whites in the United States, which of course has become so obvious and imperative in recent months. There is a lot, a lot of tension, and I would urge members of council who meet with NAACP and any of the other individuals who represent the community of color here in Meadville, particularly if you're white, to really listen and not let your own ideas about things get in the way of hearing what is being said. I'm, I'm so familiar with that phenomenon, particularly that white people have trouble listening to black people. I've seen that myself in my own life, and I've read about it so many times over the years. There's a lot of mistrust on the part of people of color toward white people, they don't think that white people have people of color's best interest in mind, the interests that we've got in mind are us white folks, and as a result, while often they don't bother to speak, particularly to speak to power, when it's represented by mostly white people. So I just urge the council members to take this meeting and to be open to what you hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe.
Joe Tompkins, 311 Prospect Street, um, I just wanted to take a moment and, uh, just remind council about, I, so I'm, uh, speaking about the appointment to the RDA that's on the agenda, I'm one of the people who submitted a letter of interest, so I just wanted to remind you about why I'm interested in that position, as I mentioned in the letter, um, I think the RDA has done a good job, um, in creating a bunch of business loan programs, but as I stated, I think it would be important, I would like to see the RDA prioritize housing, the housing problem in particular. As I'm sure you all know, um, the housing situation in our area, we've got a lot of older housing, a lot of dilapidated properties, a lot of properties in need of rehabilitation, we've also got a pretty big low and moderate income population, uh, most of whom are renters, and, uh, as the county housing plan mentioned, the 2019 county housing plan pointed out, uh, the majority of the renters in the city, so renters make up 60% of Meadville, 52% of them are rent burden, meaning they struggle to pay rent, so this effectively amounts to an affordable housing crisis, I would call this a crisis when over half of the rental population cannot afford rent, and so I think it behooves the RDA through a combination of rehabilitation redevelopment strategies to address this crisis, uh, it's fully within the RDA's purview to do this. Uh, I'll just remind council again that the city's own comprehensive plan of 2013 lists housing rehabilitation as a, quote, a high priority action item, right? It's also the case that both the city housing, or both the city comprehensive plan and the Crawford County Housing Plan, uh, stresses the importance of both the city and the county pursuing state and federal funds for affordable housing, uh, including the kinds of funds that RDAs typically administer, such as the home program funds, uh, and it's also the case that the county housing plan recommends something like land banks as a way to deal with blight, I mean, land banks, uh, if you're familiar with it or not, it's something that a number of cities in Pennsylvania have done, created land banks as a way to address the blight problem, uh, and in Pennsylvania, there was a new law in 2018 that made it possible for redevelopment authorities to be designated to act as land banks, so what they basically did is made it really easy enough for RDAs to function in this way, I think that would be a great benefit to our city, it would essentially allow us to take a more systematic approach in how we deal with vacant property and dilapidated property. So, the, the bottom line here is I think that the RDA, again, it's done a fine job focusing on business loans, but I think we need to prioritize our housing problem, right? The RDA right now is largely made up of business people, and they spend most of their time giving loans to other business people, and there's certainly a place for that, especially now, a lot of small businesses are struggling as a result of the pandemic, but that is not the sole responsibility of the redevelopment authority, redevelopment authority, the purview of the redevelopment authority is the rehabilitation redevelopment of residential housing, right, not just commercial enterprises, so, um, I would just ask that council take this problem seriously, uh, I think we need to make it a priority, as I've said, it's up to you whether we make that a priority of the city, and so my letter of interest as far as the RDA goes is to say, hey, I'm here to help you, uh, if you want my help, I'm happy to volunteer. Thanks.
Thank you. Drake.
Hello, my name is Drake Parker, 316 Willow Street, uh, just wanted to call, to come and comment on the letter that I emailed to you guys, and to express my intention is to come together, bring in the voices of those who are concerned in our community, people of color who are concerned in our community, who, maybe these concerns you don't see, you don't recognize, but they are there, and begin to build a bridge of cooperation, where we wanna bring the voices and the concerns and share them with you and work with you to come up with a viable solution to address the concerns and in the end, lead to a united front for Meadville. So, um, I know you're gonna consider what type of meeting or how we should get together, um, I would encourage, we have some sort of intimate setting initially, where we begin to structure, put together a bigger game plan, I already talked with, uh, the honorable mayor and city manager about some ideas, um, people are ready to hear, um, what the city wants to do, and, uh, from my meetings with the mayor and city manager and the people that already know in the council, I know that you guys are open, and you're willing to hear what's going on, and you are concerned, and I think it's important that we just share that with you, and you share with us your ideas and concerns, and we come together and wait to just build a better Meadville, so, nothing more than that, I'll sit back down and I'll just wait to hear what your decision is when that part of the agenda comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Drake. Katie. Uh, Andy, would you like to give us an update on the disaster emergency?
Sure, Your Honor, so, just, uh, as we've been knowing since the, for the past several months, during disaster declaration of, um, declaration of disaster emergency under which we still operate, um, you probably, if you've, um, been paying attention at the state level, there's been controversy over the state declaration and sort of a battle brewing between the governor's office and, and the legislature, um, we're still operating into our local disaster emergency, uh, and just by way of updates, so, last week, the city did reopen, um, technically playgrounds, parks, shelters, athletic courts, um, we've installed using your own risk signage, we are doing increased cleaning, but, uh, probably not to the, you know, the level of the CDC guidance, and so, we encourage people to wash their hands, to practice social distancing, um, uh, but we did reopen those last week. By way of other general updates in terms of staffing, um, a property, one of our prime time property maintenance inspectors did return to work last week, um, really just to deal with the backlog and increasing citizen complaints with high grass and junk, uh, primarily, uh, to address those, um, the fire department will resume, plans to resume commercial fire inspections beginning Monday, July 6th, along with their other normal services, car seat inspections, fire extinguisher trainings, et cetera, uh, and we anticipate beginning parking enforcement on a limited basis, um, on July 6th as well. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
I see in the note that you have put porta-potties in and hand sanitizing stations...
That's correct.
...at all of our parks.
Parks that don't have, so the parks that did not have bathroom facilities, so, um, Shady Brook Park and, uh, Biscatania Park had bathroom facilities, um, and, but we have installed then porta-potties at H.P. Wade Park, at Heidi Cooper Park, and then also Lincoln Park, um, Fifth Avenue Park on, on Lincoln Avenue. Fourth Ward Park.
I'm sure the kayakers and those who are using our, our parks would really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for Andy under the emergency update?
More about the parking, well, well, tell me some more about the parking downtown.
So, we have two parking, and we've historically had two part, uh, parking enforcement officers, um, and so we will bring one back, beginning to do backlog maintenance and collections of meters, um, here at the end of the month.
Have you been cleaning them out? I've had people tell me that they're really full.
No, we, they've been far loaded, right.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're, that's where the first employee will come back now and we'll begin collecting, 'cause people have still been feeding them.
Put money in, yes, they're not marked, and people just assume.
Right, we have good, dutiful citizens, we've trained them well, um, so that'll be the first phase here in the last couple of weeks, and, and limited enforcement then would begin on, on Monday, the 6th of July.
When you say limited enforcement, can you give me the...
Because we have limited staff, who will still have to do, um, so it won't be...
You might get caught, you might not.
Yeah, and it's really just to address problem areas and can, you know, there's, there are complaints that come in in terms of, um, people, um, and then also to do parking meter maintenance and collections, um, because we will be minimally staffed, it'll, it, it won't be aggressive enforcement.
Anybody else, questions for Andy? Notice of executive meetings, Katie?
Uh, on June 3rd, 2020, executive session was held to discuss real estate.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
A discussion, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Um, Katie, under communications, please.
Uh, Your Honor, we, uh, email was received on June 4th from Ron Irwin, who owns Irwin Properties within the city, um, he was writing to address concerns or, um, regarding the proposed appointment to the redevelopment authority, he expresses his support for Jeff Youngs, um, and expresses that he is opposed to, uh, Joe Tompkins being appointed based on his involvement with other organizations and, um, the property that Common Roots owns on South Main Street, and the condition of said property.
Have a second letter?
Your Honor, this is an email received on June 9th from Drake Parker, president of the NAACP, uh, in it, he asked council, as well as Chief Totten, to, um, uh, sorry, sit down and have a meeting to discuss the problems within the city and then come together to initiate change that is needed.
Thank you. Uh, manager's report, Andy, I believe we're gonna go ahead and do A, and then you'll give your report afterwards, so that'll be the presentation.
That's fine, Your Honor, respect to Mr. Parker's request anyhow, is there, um, I mean, is there a way that council, I don't know if you are addressing that now, or how council wants to proceed in, in those discussions, I don't know if you wanna...
Um, we could discuss that now, so we're not holding you up, I know you need to leave afterwards, so maybe, council, would that be all right if we do that discussion?
It's fine.
All right. Um, I, I think I'm gonna start out, uh, Drake, if you have any questions or comments, please, you know, you'll be able to, um, I had the opportunity to meet Drake, I believe it was on last week, it's been so busy, Monday or Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday, it was a great conversation, um, and I'd like to continue to go forward with your letter, um, and, and I want council to have that opportunity also to, to discuss it, but I just wanna thank you ahead of time for taking that time to meeting with, with me and, and going over the issues, and, and I think, uh, in my mind, we're on the same page, working in the same direction, so, um, I'm just gonna open up for council comments.
Uh, I'd like to be part of any meeting that, that happens, um, I've been contacted by, uh, lots of citizens with similar concerns, who I think would be willing to contribute to whatever effort may be come, could potentially come out of a conversation, uh, and so bringing them into this, uh, uh, would be great, and it's something I'm particularly concerned about too, so...
Drake's son's her same age as mine, so I've known him for a long time now, as long as you've been in town, I assume. Uh, anything we can do, I, I just, I, I don't know what we can, I know there's things we can do, but I mean, how are we gonna go about making a meet, some kind of meeting and talking, that's, you know, I'd sort, I mean, 'cause we have, if it's public, we have to be public, all five of us are there, it has to be...
A public meeting.
Can I?
Sure, absolutely.
So, one of the things we're thinking initially is I'll have, uh, a political action committee prepared, um, key individuals that'll sit down with you, um, and again, begin discussing the concerns, the things we've been, uh, the complaints that have come to us, some of the things we've noticed, present them to you, and, um, whether it's all of you or not, I, I'm not sure how that part works out, but we're willing to sit down and initiate the conversation on what we do next, whether it's public forum or, uh, some sort of, uh, unilateral committee, um, you know, we're open to all of that, and, um, we've got some pretty good, um, people who wanna get involved, um, I won't mention any names right now, but, um, we're excited about that opportunity, and the thing is, there's fear that's rampant, um, and the media just amplifies that fear, and it's justified, but we also want, if we, if we can head this off by being proactive, positioning the city as well as the members of the community, in a, in a, in a position where we're working towards solutions and we're publicly addressing these concerns and we're showing proactive steps being taken and being communicated, it goes a long way, so, we're open to whatever works best for you guys, um, just the opportunity to initiate this is, is, is the most important part, and, um, you know, I'm accessible to any, any of you, if you wanna send me an email, give me a call, I'm always available, but we just wanna get that started, so, I don't know what the mayor had in mind, or Andy had in mind, or you guys, but we're open to it, you just let me know what works best for you.
Mayor, it sounds like they might be looking at a, establishing a focus group, and maybe we could have one or two council members appointed for that, um, so there is representation by the city, but there's no violation of sunshine laws, because it's not a policymaking number.
Correct. That would be probably my recommendation, is to have two on, yeah, but you always have every right to contact any one of us...
Right.
...and have a discussion.
Right.
Um, and we can do, and reverse too.
Yes.
I guess, Andy, we're, what was your...
I would suggest the same, right, as, as Drake indicated, right, we could end up with some sort of proposed larger forum that's all of council, some public meeting, but in terms of a working group that has initial conversations in a smaller setting that determines what that best looks like and, and what format and what timeline, I think it would be more nimble with, with two members of council, for instance.
Larry, you and I've lived through the late 60s and 70s, and, uh, we saw what could happen, and, and I'm really proud of Meadville, I mean, we may not always agree, but I have found we've always been able to talk, at least in most cases, so, is there any, Autumn, I know you have an interest.
I have an interest.
And with the sunshine laws, you can't have the three, right?
Right. So, would you like to, to serve on that?
I trust you guys, you can go right ahead.
So why don't we go ahead and appoint you and Autumn, and then, but like I said, you can contact any of us, um, and what normally happens, Drake, is when we appoint a, a subcommittee or, or a task group, or whatever you wanna call it, is that the two council members bring back the information to council, um, whether it's written form or, or covered form.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's kind of their responsibility to bring back the issues, unless there's an issue that you've gone or being brought back, then you can certainly... that you've gone or being brought back, then you can certainly call any of us.
Okay.
But I'm sure the two of them will work great together.
Need a formal motion?
Yeah, let's do this for them. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. So I'll let them connect with you and...
Okay.
And I'm sure we're going to talk in a couple hours.
Yes, yes, definitely. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for coming in. And thanks for addressing the letter to us.
Thank you.
Want to go ahead and do the college?
Okay, so I will, so under my managers' report then, you'll see, listen here, a presentation by Allegheny College President Hillary Link, who has brought several members of her team. Hillary, you can make your way over to the podium while I tee this up. So this will be Hillary's first welcome to Meadville City Council meeting. We had good intentions of maybe doing an introduction under different circumstances, but specific to this topic, obviously in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic, it was probably in several weeks into it where Hillary contacted me, President Link, sorry, contacted me saying, okay, we've got to be thinking of the future, what does this look like, what are some initial concerns? The college is obviously proceeding towards opening in the fall of in-person teaching and to resume some sense of normalcy anyhow. And we've invited Hillary, we've received several questions from members of the community and maybe some members of council. And we thought this would be a good opportunity for President Link to come, talk about those plans, the planning process anyhow. Obviously, I'm sure there's lots of details still yet to come together, timelines, present that information to council. Council, you could ask questions, and I suppose if there's members, questions from members of the audience, we would accept those as well, so.
We will do that after council.
Okay, that's fine. So I encourage us to go ahead and take the floor and do an introduction and...
I will do that. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the council for having me. I'm happy to be here, it's my first visit. So I'm Hillary Link, as Andy said, president of Allegheny. I have a number of colleagues who are here in the audience with me. So just Ron Cole, who is our provost, chief academic officer, Linda Wetzel, our CFO, Kristen Dukes, who is our chief diversity officer and dean for institutional diversity, Professor Becky Dawson, who I'll come back to, but is a faculty member and Allegheny alum, and April Thompson, who's our vice president for student life, and Cornell Lassane, who is our vice president for enrollment. So thank you, first of all, to my colleagues for being here. I thought it would be helpful to bring a team because depending on what questions people have, they might be best equipped to answer them. So I'll just very quickly describe sort of how we've gotten to this point. As Andy mentioned, pretty much as soon, almost as soon as we went remote, we started thinking about what the future would hold for the college. We, I should say that technically the college is still closed of sorts. We are all still working remotely. Our intent is to reopen in a staggered way, starting July 1st. But for now, we've basically all been working remote since about mid-March, when the governor sent out the stay-at-home order. We developed very early on a number of initiatives that were to allow us to outreach to local experts, national experts, public health experts, on what the best course of action would be. So Andy and I had a number of conversations. I've had conversations with Meadville Medical Center, a whole number of them, with a number of other people locally, some of the business owners in town, et cetera. We then were consulting with some disaster and pandemic management experts who are alums of the college and some other public health alums as well, who gave us a tremendous amount of guidance. And then I've been, and my colleagues as well, at different levels in very frequent communication with some of our peer institutions, local institutions, to understand what people were doing. So what we did was we formed, so let me say, we started out with several guiding principles, the most important of which was twofold: to protect the health and safety of our campus community, faculty, staff, students, and simultaneously to protect to the extent possible our local community of Meadville and Crawford County. I want to say very quickly, some of you may have been following a previous issue, which was where we took a lot of pushback from our campus community in our efforts to protect Meadville and Crawford County from having people rush back to retrieve all of their belongings from all over the country with no way of testing them or knowing if they were carrying the virus. So I hope that people in the community understood that that decision was made to protect our local community to the extent that we could. We took a lot of heat from that, on that, I will say. So guiding principle, protecting the health and well-being of our campus community and our local community, to communicate as transparently and honestly and in as engaged a manner as possible with our communities. And then we really had to look at the long-term viability of the college. And if we didn't reopen in the fall or for the spring, what the long-term future would look like for the college. We are, and we have been for 205 years, a residential liberal arts college. And the residential piece of that is core to our mission. And so we believe firmly that that is what we need to do for our local community, for our campus community. We also believe that we have a number of factors that are advantageous in that. So first of all, the fact that our county has been relatively unaffected by the virus up to this point. And that's where it becomes really important for us to help maintain that. The size of our campus community, we have about 1,700 students and fewer than 500 faculty and staff. So knowing that we have about 2,200 students, we felt really comfortable that we could do this as a campus-wide effort in a way that would protect our campus and the community as well. We also have a very strong community ethos or environment to our college. And so we felt really strongly that we would be able to get people on board in a supportive way to work together, both within the campus, but then also working with a number of local partners as well. So we divided up our senior leadership team into 12 different implementation groups to look at every single aspect of what reopening in the fall would mean. And that's everything from what PPE or other equipment do we need to stockpile to have available? Bleach wipes, masks, someone help me, what are some of the others?
Hand sanitizer.
Hand sanitizers, plexiglass dividers, et cetera. We have an entire group looking at space needs. What does it mean to have seats in a classroom six feet apart? Which way do chairs need to be turned? Which way should people be entering and exiting certain buildings so that we're dealing with traffic issues, et cetera? What does it look like to have visitors to campus? Whether those are admissions visitors, prospective students, or people who normally come and walk on our campus or attend events on the campus, et cetera. So as Andy said, we don't have all of the answers right now. We have a very thorough and kind of starting to advance plan, but we also recognize that the data on what the CDC recommends, what the World Health Organization recommends, what the statewide infection rate looks like, this is changing, as you all know, daily. So we also recognize that our plans will continue to change and evolve, basically not just when we welcome students back, but throughout the entire next year or until there is a virus or a cure. So we see this as a very iterative process, where we're constantly returning to certain areas and rethinking based on new information that we've been able to get or new ideas that people have. So again, we have these 12 implementation groups. What we also did, and this is where Professor Dawson is really important, is we created our own Allegheny College Health Agency. And that is co-directed by Professor Dawson and a local emergency room physician, Dr. Gabrielle Morrow. And between the medical side and the public health side, they are giving us tremendous advice on health policies, protocols, decision-making, et cetera. So they are really providing the backbone of the medical and public health guidance that we are using to answer questions that are being developed by these 12 implementation groups. And then we are frequently sharing out information as we're arriving at it through Zoom calls on our campus, through meetings like this. Dr. Dawson hosts Mondays at 7:00 PM on Eric Henry's Facebook, Crawford County Facebook COVID site, a Q and A. So we are trying, and she and I, she had me on as a guest last week, again, to answer questions that people have. We fully recognize that there are more questions than we probably have answers at this moment, but we continue to come up with answers and to solidify certain pieces as we go, fully recognizing that we may set a policy and make a decision one day and have to revisit it three days later when we learn new information. So we are working hard to do this in as collaborative a way as possible in partnership with our local community. One of the things that is really important to us, fully recognizing the community caution or fear of us bringing students back from all over the country and in other parts of the world. But the flip side of that is if we can do this, we want to make sure that they are welcomed and feel comfortable and feel safe here in Meadville and Crawford County as well. So we're really trying to look at this from all different aspects. I think I'll stop there. Before we take questions, is there anything that any of my colleagues would add? Ron? Is that allowed? Sorry.
Sure.
Thank the President Link, thank the Mayor Sterns.
The mayor won't tell you no, so.
Sorry.
So I just want to echo the, and I've been at Allegheny now for 26 years, longtime resident of Meadville. I think that one of the priorities I know that President Link has is helping to grow and maintain, not just maintain, but grow the relationship between Allegheny College and Meadville and focusing on community resilience. And this type of communication is absolutely critically important to that work. And it really dovetails with some of the earlier conversations I've heard here this evening. So I really thank the council for providing this forum.
So we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, before we start, I want to thank you for coming tonight because communication's very important, especially with this type of crisis that we're dealing with, because rumors start so quickly. And let's keep the rumors to the facts. Because once the students start coming back, you know, there may be rumors starting. So we're going to have to have an open communication the entire time through this process. And it's a good process we have. Second of all, I know your job's not been easy. I know what I've dealt with, just with the community on different things. So I appreciate that. I think one of the biggest points that I'm concerned about is, one, if, and we have to understand privacy, but if you do have a student or students that would become sick with the virus, will that information, I mean, is that going to go, just like we have been with the counties, are going to go through the county system that we're going to know that? Because, one, I don't want a student harassed. I mean, if you're sick, that's bad enough. But also, we'd like to make sure, we're at 35 right now, let's hope that number just continues to drop. Realistically, let's hope it doesn't grow, but it could.
So before I turn this over to Professor Dawson, let me say, and thank you for the reminder, so our plan, you may have read some of this, but let me just say that we are at our own expense planning to test, to screen every single one of our faculty, staff, and students before they arrive to campus. So the purpose of doing that is, as we know, public health information will tell us that many people are asymptomatic. So this is a way for us to know before people are allowed to come back if they are carriers or not. And if they are, they will be isolated and not allowed to move into campus and into the community. So we will test everybody to start, and then, go ahead.
Do you want to come on? So the whole reason, it was an advocate of comment to make a health agency, and we're doing it, but I think the real reason is by establishing a real health agency on campus, we can provide clinical care and public health work. And so part of our work is going to be to continue the screening process throughout the semester. So we are going to look at high-risk individuals, groups that are traveling, faculty that have traveled, to make sure that they're not bringing the virus back or that we're not spreading it in residence halls. We will have our own system of daily health screens, quarantine, isolation, contact tracing, and notification of the community. So we are planning for weekly updates about how many people were tested, how many positive tests came back. I don't know how exactly we're going to do, but we have a really cool social media thing for it, right? Like, it's beautiful. But we do want to do that. And I will be really honest, we are operating under the assumption that there will be a case. I think we're, I'm just going to be let alone. If we were, and I mean K through 12, Meadville, all the, if we all are assuming we're going to be immune to this, it's five in 1,000 people right now. It's going to start increasing as we're here, and we're going to see it more as testing increases. So we are operating under the assumption that there will be a case on campus. It could be faculty, it could be students, but we're preparing for that when moment, not an if moment.
One of the other questions that I have concern, because I live near the college. So when the students come back, students will be students. You know, they're not going to not have guests to their residence off-campus, which would be the Prospect Street, West College and things. Is there plans in place to, I mean, if students, I'm sure you're going to educate them, but what kind of overlook are you going to have?
I'm going to ask April Thompson to respond as our dean of student center. Go ahead.
So we're working on plans for enforcement of our policies. When students come back, we will be asking them to sign additional agreements over and above what they are expected to do now, that include things like limiting guests, having off-campus guests, things like that. Students who violate the policies, students who won't maintain, for example, face coverings, things like that, will eventually be asked to leave campus, and we will work with them to continue their education remotely from home with families. That is the plan. And we will hopefully, this fall, once students and families sign this agreement, the commitment they make to both the college and the Meadville and Crawford County communities, it will go a long way to keep people from doing those kinds of things that put all of our health at risk.
One of the challenges, as, you know, we've all been wandering through the campus, I mean, through the city, et cetera, there are many places where people are not wearing face masks. And so we also recognize that we start to look very restrictive on campus, on campus, when anywhere else they might go, they're going to see everybody not wearing face masks. So I think one of our pleas to our community would be, help us support this. We are going to toe the line really, really strongly. And we are going to hold students accountable, we are going to hold our campus community accountable. It's just harder to do when, wherever they go, the rest of the local community is not necessarily following this, Aprils.
So when you have your summer, or your fall breaks, Thanksgiving and Christmas, so when the students leave campus and they come back, are they going to be retested again?
No, so they're not. We, so we have adjusted, and if you've been following any of the education news in the country, this won't be a surprise. We have shortened our semester to... We have shortened our semester to remove all breaks. And it will be 12 weeks on campus. They will start arriving back in a staggered way. Because we're testing them all as they come in, you can't have more than 250 on a given day come back. So moving will take about nine or 10 days. Classes will start August 31st. There will be no fall break. And they will leave campus for good November 20th. So they will be gone for Thanksgiving. They will not be returning. And that was very purposeful because you can't have them scattered and coming back. Then, because we are assuming, and health experts will tell us, the spring is probably going to look a lot like the fall, we are beginning our spring semester with a three-week remote module. So that instead of having everyone return to campus in mid-January as they normally would, they will be off-campus doing one intensive remote course. And then they won't come back for in-person classes until mid-February, end of February right now.
So they'll start coming back in the.
Third week in February, at which point, assuming we are still at the same point that we are in now, we will test them all again over a nine-day period. They will then have 12 weeks, no spring break, and they will leave campus after that. So we did that very purposefully in part because we all know that the coinciding of COVID and the flu season is going to be complicated and confusing. We have many, many students who, in any given year, have influenza, have tested positive for influenza A and B. So the idea is that they will actually, except for a small group of students who frankly don't have homes to go to or international students can't leave or get back, they will be able to remain on campus, just as we've kept a very small cohort on campus since we shut down in March. But the rest of the students will leave and be gone from November 20th until about mid-February.
I know you have planning crews and residents that are from Meadville. So how are you going to, and can you enforce that? Like, do you mean that they go from college back and commute back and forth? How is that?
Yinda, I'm going to ask you to talk about our vendors and policies on how we work with our third parties.
Yes, so we're working with our vendors. They have, they are preparing the protocols for, your question is more about them traveling back and forth and testing. So they will have the same type of questions every day when they come to campus, whether it's taking, again, these things may change, taking their temperature, asking the questions of verification, have they been exposed? Have they been sick in the last hours? We're going through that now, even with some of the vendors that are coming on campus to work on the Bentley construction progress or project. So we'll continue that effort. When they are on campus, we are using the protocols to help clean campus. You know, we'll be specifically speaking for like the housekeeping staff. We have the protocols that are appropriate from the CBC and what needs to be done in the residence halls or the common areas.
But let me say, in some ways, the St. Moretz or the Parkhurst employees who live locally and come to campus every day are not radically different than all of us staff and many of our faculty, who, we don't live on campus. So I think what we're really trying to do is create as safe a space as possible, fully recognizing that we cannot create a bubble. So just as St. Moretz or Parkhurst or any of us who live off-campus need to go to the supermarket and go to work, we will all be doing all of the mitigating efforts for safety that we think, we know, keep the disease at bay, right? Wearing face masks, washing our hands, keeping physical distance. So just as we will all be doing that, because we can't be in the bubble of campus, we will expect all of our vendors to do this.
Thank you.
That stockpile of PPE, will that be available to vendors? Or is that faculty, students?
I'm looking at the people in charge.
We are working with vendors. If they're not able to get what they need through their suppliers, we have been providing them, because we have our housekeeping staff on campus now and some others. So what they've not been able to get themselves, we have been supporting.
I guess I have another question, sports. What's the game plan for sports?
Bill Ross is not here, our athletic director. What Bill would tell you is, the issue with sports is that there are multiple competing bodies that have not yet made a final decision. So the NCAA has put out its thoughts that they're going to go ahead with their championship season, et cetera. We belong to the Athletic Conference, which is the NCAC, the North Coast Athletic Conference. They are still in the process of determining, because the NCAA, as the overseeing body, put out a statement saying, we believe we should return, but not saying, here's what you need to do. So it is up to every conference to determine how many games will be played. Will they play a whole season? Will there be travel? Will we divide into two conferences? The complication of our athletic conference is that we compete against schools in Ohio and Indiana. And so it's a distance issue for them and for us. And so every school is looking at what that would mean. Athletes are among the, as Becky mentioned, more exposed groups. So for example, if the football team travels to Wabash College, they will be tested upon return because we know that they're more at risk. I think, I'm going to be fully honest with you. I think the NCAA and every athletic conference is kind of closing their eyes and crossing their fingers and hoping that this somehow figures itself out. We're still trying to figure out, even if we do go ahead with athletic competition, can we have people in the stands? Again, can they be people from our community or could they be people from the local community? It's unfortunate because it all coincides with my desire to get more community involvement in our athletic events, but this may not be the fall that we're allowed to do that. So we are working on it. Just to give you a sense, the NCAC is so still trying to figure this out that we don't even have a football schedule yet for fall. So it's up in the air.
Do you see Allegheny transitioning to more online learning as a result of this?
You mean, long-term, not just to get through this crisis?
Correct.
Well, I think, and I'm going to let Ron respond to this, but my sense would be, I hope so in a creative way. Look, we are a residential college. We have always been a residential college. It is what we do exceedingly well. And it is what we will always do. That being said, I think there are opportunities to provide remote learning, both to our students, but also to people in the community, to other people who may not be able to come to campus in ways that we have not thought about before. So I see it as an, a value added to what we do as a core mission in ways that, you know, if travel issues continue to be problematic, we may look at international students doing remote classes. We may look at adult learning. We may look at many different things. Because we know we can. We did it on a dime in March. It was not perfect. But we learned a lot. And I don't know, Ron, if you have anything else you want to add.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for the question. Just more or less reiterating what President Linck shared, but I can add to this that it was in early winter at a meeting of our faculty, I stood in front of the faculty and said, talked about launching targeted online initiatives for some of the groups that President Linck discussed. Primarily, in this case, we started launching towards a program for international students this summer, some targeted online courses. I also told the faculty that I never envisioned that we would wholesale shift to online learning. And I had to eat those words this past spring. So we did pivot, we did a lot of learning. Our faculty are now involved with professional development for understanding ways in which they could deliver courses with the possibility of having to shift remotely again. But we also have this intentional portion of remote learning built into next year, as President Linck described, to allow a greater period of time that our students are off-campus. To answer your question, I see us maintaining our core identity as a residential liberal arts college with targeted online initiatives. And we would welcome those conversations with members of the community as well.
I'm trying to envision a virtual homecoming.
Well, so one of our 12 implementation groups is specifically on campus events. What does homecoming and family weekend look like? What does our postponed commencement look like? So we obviously did not hold commencement on May 9th as we had planned, which turned out to be a good thing because it snowed that day. But we made a decision not to do strictly a virtual commencement because we knew that for our students, it was really important to have that very hands-on, in-person Allegheny experience to conclude their education. So we postponed it until October. And now the big question is, if the regulations stay, where you can't have a gathering of more than 250 people, what does that look like? And so we're working through that. Do we do multiple sections of it, of no more than 250 people, to give whoever wants to come back and walk across the stage in front of Bentley Hall the opportunity to do so? Also recognizing that, you know, that 250-person limit may go up or it may go down, depending on if there are spikes in cases. So it's, everything is a game time decision at this point.
Sean, any questions?
No, you've answered a lot of the questions. I feel comfortable, I think, that you are trying to come up with answers. And I realize that this is all your, it changes every day. And I feel sorry for you that you have to deal with this, but that's, everybody's dealing with something new right now. All I really was concerned, and I feel that you're going to be fine, is if somebody was to be positive, I don't want to read about it in the national news or out of Harrisburg, tell me. I don't want to know. Because it'll turn up on Facebook, everything seems to.
Oh, yeah.
Really quick.
Even before we know about it sometimes. And that's where, I think, to Professor Dawson's point, she's an epidemiologist, and she has been, not to overexaggerate, but the biggest asset that we have in all of this. Because to be a small undergraduate college with this type of expertise is such a benefit, not just to the college, but to the entire local community. And I know many of you are on Facebook and asking her questions and getting her responses. But, you know, we're not the University of Michigan or Harvard that has its own medical school and School of Public Health. But we're immensely fortunate to have been able to create something similar to that. And to, as she said before, because she's also very hooked in with the entire Northwest PA Health Agency, we will be able to participate in the tracing, the tracking, and the communicating as set up by other regions as well.
Ron?
No, just thank you all for being here. So I'm hearing, right, this adjusted academic semester, pretty comprehensive health agency on campus that'll do universal testing and a policy that students will agree to with, you know, enforcement and things around that. Are there any other kind of big decisions that we should know about that have been made at this point?
There are about eight million small decisions. What other, I'm looking at other big decisions. Cornell, anything you can think of? I mean, just whether, you know, obviously, we can't keep people in a bubble. We have to keep the college, you know, functioning. I do believe our own travel will be drastically reduced. So it's not that many of us, we will, people will still be going to places as needed. But that's where the whole remote aspect makes life a lot easier. We've all realized that Zoom meetings can very often take the place of getting on a plane. So I think our goal, again, we can't, we cannot, we keep joking, we can't wrap everything in bubble wrap and just feel 1,000% safe. And to Becky's point, and all public health people will tell you, you would be silly to assume nothing's going to happen. So I think it's really helped us to say, okay, we believe it will happen, but we also believe we're prepared. We have space to isolate students should they become ill. We have technology that will enable them to keep up with their classes should they have to isolate. And we will all be as careful as possible whether bringing people to campus or as we all travel off. But I don't think there are any other big pieces. I mean, we could bore you for hours with all the small decisions.
And I don't ask because there should be more. I ask just so you have an opportunity to share because I know a lot of work is done and a lot of consideration about people. So thank you for considering Meadville as well.
No, thank you all.
Laura, your question? Kim?
I guess one more question. Has the response to COVID hampered and diminished the numbers of anticipated incoming freshmen?
That's for him.
Great question. So we're about 95% of goal right now. So some, yes, but not in a huge way. But I think we're still looking at 30-plus states, represented in 16 different countries. And so still happy to see that level of interest, even during a global pandemic.
So there were what, around 440?
Total right now, 440, 447.
Yeah, so lower than we would have liked, but so much higher than we feared at a certain point, given that no one has been able to visit the campus since about, what, March 10th?
Yep.
So remarkable work by Cornell and his team.
Is there anybody in the audience who would have a question for President Linck? I want to thank you for coming in. You know, and I know I say this on behalf of the entire city and council is that we certainly want Allegheny College to be safe. We want the students to be safe. We want to make sure that. I'm just concerned rumors, you know? I don't want to see individuals handpicked or, you know, I hate to say it, but I'm afraid we are going to have cases. And if you don't, then you're foolish. And Becky, I've been watching and listening to your, you can become a TV star here for years.
Oh, she is, I love her so much.
The information you've given has been fantastic. And I'm sure all of the Allegheny staff have worked very hard. I kind of look at what you're doing and it has no compare to what we have to deal with on parks, making sure that they're safe for the kids to be in. And I just say that is because, you know, we take that serious, and I know you guys have taken it serious. One thing I would like to suggest, periodically keeping either Andy or Counsel updated. I know you're changing, you're going to have continuous changes, but the key ones, if you could just keep Andy updated so he can keep Counsel, because we're the ones that's going to get the call from the residents around the college. So if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it.
No, that's a wonderful suggestion. We will happily do that. We want to provide you with as much information as we can so that you have responses when people call. Look, we know it's natural that if there is a spike in cases, people will look to the college. But that's why we need to be able to say to all of you and to our whole community, we've tested everybody. Nobody brought it into the community. Now, whether any of us gets it Now, whether any of us gets it in the course of our daily life is a whole other situation, but we need to be able to look everybody in the eye and say that. The other small piece of this I just want to say, so two things. One, we should in the next couple of days have health guidance, guiding principles, which we would be happy to share because I think it gives you a really clear sense of how far we have gone in thinking through this. So I will share that with you all. But the other piece of this is that, you know, as I said, part of what we need to think about is the long-term viability of the college. At the same time, to Ron's point, since I arrived 11 months ago, the resilience and vitality of Meadville has really risen to the top of my agenda and how the college can be more of an anchor institution and a real economic driver for the city and the county. And so for us, it's also important to bring students back because they do populate the restaurants and the bars and stores. And we also see that as an important role that the college and our student body plays. So that was a piece of also wanting to continue to contribute to the economic well-being of Meadville while also trying to protect the community to the extent possible.
Well, and I also want to offer to make sure that you know that we're here. There's something that we can do as a council, individuals. Please, Ron, you know that, welcome to reach out. And we have a good working relationship and it's going to continue. We just want to make sure our community's safe.
Yes, no, as should we. Thank you.
And I'm really sorry that your first year of being involved. You sure you don't want to go back to the league?
Oh, I do often, except it's worse there. So that's your saving grace, but thank you all.
And all Allegheny staff, thank you for being here this evening and taking your time. And Becky, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Your honor, you have other topics I'm going to find quickly. Actually, I believe tomorrow evening, the Crawford County Office of Public Safety and County Commissioner are hosting a central region Crawford County Fire Service meeting, which the fire chief has been invited to and I'll be attending as well. Just looking at across the board matters in terms of staffing, volunteerism, needs, funding, all aspects of fire service. And that meeting is tomorrow night. I'll report back any findings or efforts or initiatives back to Council. Council, recall that we had changed pension fund management advisors and investors to, from C.S. McKee to ANDCO. Debbie reports that that transition has been complete. All funds have been transitioned and reinvested. As of late last week or earlier this week, I don't remember when.
How'd we do?
I think we were out, well, I don't have all that. We were out for like a day and a half out of market in the transition.
But in terms of, did we sell high and buy low?
They haven't reported, they're getting all that information together. They're preparing a report for us to see how that went.
Thank you.
Council, where we received two different sources of grant funding for the Bicentennial Park Boat Launch Project. That project has been designed, going out to bid with the proposed contract award dated Council's July 15 meeting. I had shared information, as did the Tribune just yesterday, I think, the Spring Street Bridge detour is planned for next week. There will be waterproofing on the bridge. Everyone's, no one read the Meadville Tribune article. They read only the headline. It is not the, not the major bridge over the bypass, the tracks in French Creek that's being waterproofed. It is slated for replacement in several years. It's a bridge further up towards the Burnet Township line over Festivalwago Creek that will be rehanded as part of the overall paving, waterproof as part of the overall paving project. I don't know the timeline on which the Spring Street Bridge is to be replaced, but it's an ongoing design process. The Port Street Footbridge Project, also grant-funded. The contractor mobilized this week with their construction trailer and we expect construction to get underway for the rehabilitation of the bridge. I don't know if we have a revised timeline post-COVID. We were looking for an October completion date. We're guessing that might be pushed back, but we'll report back as we have better information as a project that's underway.
So we're back on schedule, I mean, we're back on track for?
Back on track for construction to begin. I just don't know in what time frame of completion now.
There was a period of time we were worried we weren't going to be able to do it this year.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, mid-COVID, we had no idea what was going on. So in the current construction guidelines, I think we're now underway at least.
Excellent.
Cleanup day scheduled for Saturday, June 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the city's Public Works Garage, accessible off of South Main Street. The information is online on our Facebook page in terms of what we will accept and won't accept. Those have been in the Tribune many days. So again, that's Saturday, June 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. There is a $10 fee, must be a city resident and able to produce some sort of proof of residency in terms of a license or lease agreement or something. Later on in our agenda, under new businesses discussion with respect to the special Community Development Block Grant Cares Act funding, Mary Ann is here and will share that information with Council later on in the agenda. I am reporting to you though that with the, there's a second public hearing with respect to advertising, how those funds will be spent, and that is scheduled for Monday, June 29th. And again, we'll discuss more about that later on in the agenda. That's all I have.
Any questions for Andy on manager's report?
My street, Andy, right in front of my house, the sewer authorities got everything all marked out. Have they turned out my street?
I don't know anything about it. I checked into it.
I just did yesterday and I went out and asked. And it does put a new street in last year.
Is that the water, the water system or the?
It's the way it was the sewer.
Sure. Any questions?
We call on that one.
Any questions? Jim, any questions for Andy?
No questions.
Okay, let's move on to old business discussion of the employment policy draft, feedback from the authorities, board, and commission. You want to take that lead or do you want to?
I'll just report. So in your packet is what had been the draft policy that Council had been discussing. Again, we had their legal opinion that we should only be looking for members who are 18 years of age or older. And Council had directed that the policies be shared with various quarters, authorities, commissions for feedback. That's attached here, we shared that earlier with Council as well. And then earlier today, Council and Vogel provided a more streamlined, simplified, I'll let her speak to it, policy. So I guess that's as much as I will do in terms of stage setting.
Sure, so yeah, in our packets, there's the one sheet that is separate from the packet and that's, that's the revised version. That was revised by some residents who have been working on the policy. It takes into account Council's feedback and we believe the feedback from the authorities, board, and commission that we received. Chiefly, it increases the minimum age to 18. As we were advised, it eliminates the timeframe to allow for flexibility and to make it a little more simple. And it removes most of the actions that would be new kind of additional actions for staff to do, mainly the open house. And so thinking of this, this version simplifies, you know, while keeping, while keeping kind of the spirit of it that you're posting.
Sean, any questions?
I'm afraid that it's too much.
Yeah, so.
That's one of my problems with it. I like that we can do it quickly and simply. These people aren't working paid, it's all volunteer. And I just don't want to make it so that it becomes a big hassle to apply. And a lot of people, I mean, are not qualified for some of these positions. And I don't know, somebody, one of the people said that, you know, I don't want them applying for it and finding out that they really not are qualified. The zoning board, I'm not qualified on the zoning board.
You know, I understand what you're saying. I understand, but I think one of the things, one of the key things is if someone's applying to volunteer, that's showing an interest, you know? And people can learn, you know? So and I think we need to take that into consideration. You know, I don't think saying that because they, you don't feel that they're qualified or that, I just think we ought to be more open. And that's what it's about. It's being open and allowing people to have an interest and want to, want to help how they can instead of putting a roadblock up against them. If you, again, if someone's showing an interest by applying, by wanting to volunteer, to me, that says why.
Anything else?
Jim? Yeah, a couple of problems. For the reappointment process, all authority board, official members seeking reappointment follow the application process as described above. We already have the record of service. That's all the application anybody ought to need. If someone doesn't attend meetings, you say, hey, didn't attend meetings for the last four years, why would we reappoint you? I have no problem with that. If you have somebody who's been diligent and has contributed, why would you expect them to go through a process? Also, talking about the publication of vacancies, that should be the responsibility of the city, not social media because there is no recourse. If social media makes a mistake and doesn't keep its website up, okay, then we have a problem because people are saying, well, I applied for this and I wasn't considered. Well, that's because the application was done after the position was filled. So you cannot rely and should not rely on anybody except our own media. Then it is on us if we make a mistake. And I agree with Sean, anybody can apply for any position. If you want to interview people, I have no problem with interviewing people. I don't, I don't see how a lengthy process is going to assist that. I think it's going to actually have a different effect and retard the interest of people applying.
Larry?
I see it differently. If someone's willing to go through the steps to apply, to go through that, and again, that's showing that they have a natural interest and they want to be a part of it. And then you, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, but I believe at one time we were talking about city council advertising. And I think one of your comments was about we didn't have the finance or where would we get the finance?
I don't know, we have the money to advertise. That's, that's not the issue. The issue is administrative time on, on all these processes. There are people, there are openings on boards that would take exactly 30 seconds to find a highly qualified applicant. Or you could go and take weeks, if not months, to go through a process. Now, that board, authority, or commission is deprived of the expertise of those interested parties.
Realistically, I don't think, I think these positions, I don't see it taking weeks or months. I, to be honest, I think it's just, my opinion is just ways of not seeing this go through. We need some type of policy and procedure, period. Because there are people that are not made aware of things or, and it's a way for people to find out if they're really interested. Like I said, if they go through the procedure and take the time to fill out this application, you're going to learn more about the position. They're going to, you know, and that's going to show that they have that, if they have an interest. And you get somebody that just comes in and says, yeah, I want to do it. And then they come to a couple of meetings and all of a sudden, oh no, I didn't know it was about this. And so now you've got to go back and you've got to get someone else to come back through. It's going to be the same, you know, it's such a half a dozen of them. I think this way you have a set policy and this makes it easier for everybody, I feel.
I think we have a streamlined policy. It's informal, but we have a streamlined policy in place already.
Yeah, so I will just add a few things. Again, I think that this, this policy was brought up in the spirit of making things transparent and standard so that people, it is easy for people to engage in their local government and make decisions for, for the town that they live in. We've tried very hard to keep, you know, the policy that folks worked on, keep the policy that staff gave input on, but also take into account the recommendations from Council and boards, authorities, and commissions. In particular, the reappointment process looked different, but it was staff who actually said it would just be easier to have them go through the process again. I trust our staff to know what they can do. Our social media is not done by a ghost. It is done by our staff and so we can control that, I think. I will add too, I think in front of us, we see six vacancies right now. And I think in large part, that's due to no one knows how to apply and no one knows what's open. This is just a way, it really, it's not a ton of new things that we're adding on staff. It just takes some of the things that our city already does as this informal process, makes it formal, and in doing so, kind of insulates city council from, you know, accusations of nepotism or appointing people that we know or, you know, appointing from a small group of people that are always on authorities, boards, and commissions. So I, I think it's also a way to kind of protect us as well to, you know, kind of create a checklist for city staff that hopefully makes their jobs easier while also, you know, kind of fulfilling the spirit of transparency and involvement that we want from our community. So I, I guess I'm wondering like what our next steps would be. Are we, do we vote on this tonight? Do we continue to draft?
When you're finished, I'm going to jump in. So let's take a look at page two that we got tonight, all conference. So I agree that we need to have some kind of a form.
This is page one.
I'm sorry, I got it, mark two. The single page, the corrections, the changes. Let's take a look at that. So when we talk about advertising, we certainly advertise in Meadville Tribune. We have our website and our, our social media that I feel pretty comfortable staff will get corrected. If Meadville Calendar is an example on here, if you wanted to, you could just take it right off from the city website. One thing I am concerned about with social media, it can get blown up very quickly overnight, not even overnight, in just hours, that if we post it on our city website, then it is certified from the city of Meadville. You follow what I'm saying? So we can put that on our social media.
That's my point.
Yeah, exactly. So if, can we agree on that? Would that be something that we could agree on? Sean?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, okay, so the section we're saying?
Yeah, that section there. Just take it out that we're going to be doing Meadville Tribune and it will be on our social media. If anybody else wants to take copies off it, then that's what they can do.
So I'm sorry, what are you saying, take out?
Well, just as an example of Meadville Calendar, we're not going to advertise on Meadville Calendar. We're just going to put it on our website and on the Meadville Tribune. This is what I'm looking at. And we're responsible for what's on our site.
We don't handle, we don't control Meadville Calendar, is what I always say. So it doesn't want them.
Yeah, we need to keep control of our own social.
To be clear, you don't control the Meadville Tribune unless we're, we're not legally advertising, right? We're not, this does not, this proposal does not consider legal advertising, paid advertisement, right? That's my understanding.
He said like we tell him to print it so he doesn't.
Well, I guess I'm.
This is a favor.
Actually, I thought we actually paid to advertise this. We don't.
I can make that happen.
You guys would like it, I'm sure.
I believe an earlier draft might have said that and that was in this draft, that there's not a legal, I do not read this as legally advertising, paid legal advertisement.
Okay, now I misunderstood because I thought we.
Well, let's put out the bulletin board at the city hall. I think that doesn't cost us anything.
Well, no one sees it out there for that.
I guess what I'm trying to do is make sure that the public gets an opportunity to see it. So I don't know how much it, do you guys run it off? I guess I'm just going to ask you when we.
Here's what we would do, right? We would issue a, like we do every darn thing we distribute, we would issue a press release. Whether the Tribune chooses to run it or anyone else chooses to run it, that's their, that's their choice, editorial choice. But it would essentially be in the form of, I'd use it essentially in the form of a press release to say, the city of Meadville has X vacancies open, the application deadline is Y. Find more information on the city's website.
So the press release would go on our website and our Facebook page?
Sure.
And to a list of statements.
And we distribute that to, we have an existing press release now. Eerie News, media outlets, others, we can distribute to.
You okay with that? You guys are all right with that?
Could we get on that list?
What's that?
Could we get on that list?
Get on that?
Press releases?
Sure.
Don't sound so happy.
Well, I'm not the one making that decision.
He does. Yes.
So we're okay with that? So we cleared that one up? All right. So let's go back down to individuals that are already serving on the boards. I do agree with Jim on this. If you're volunteering, you've served your time, you've proved your way. I still want to see a recommendation coming from the authority or the body. I think that's important if we get that input. How do we make the individual go back through? Is that an insult for after all the time and effort they've put in? Or we just take the recommendation from the board, from that prior appointment? Input. Sean?
I prefer that you don't make them reapply. I'd like them being able to just tell us, yes, I would like to be re.
Reappointed.
I like the way we're doing it now.
I would still like the authority or that organization to support it or not.
They, I mean.
I mean, normally, we don't have that now. When we just do the appointment, we're just reappointed.
You or somebody, we'll run into somebody and they'll go, hey, so and so's no good, or so and so would like that. You did a good job. I had lots of people tell me that.
So really, we're talking about the last two because they're very similar.
Reappointment, exactly.
And members appointed prior to the policy adoption.
If we can agree to this, then I have no problem putting a policy in place that people have an opportunity to apply. So let's take the time and discuss it because this has been on the table a long time and let's get it done and off the table.
I like everything except for the bottom two. The selection process, it's pretty similar to what we do now. It's just it's not as public. And I don't know that this is making it public anyway, but I mean, I think we should tell the applicants that they got, that we received their application. If we haven't, that's a mistake we should have done.
That's a mistake we've had in the past that I would like to.
Yes, we should have been correcting anyway.
Absolutely. So, I mean, there's good things coming out of this because that has happened in the past.
I've agreed all the time that this, we haven't been transparent enough. But I don't want to make that original plan was way too cumbersome for.
Okay, so.
These people move and come and go a lot more than you're thinking.
All right, so this, let's just get back to the point. The two bottom ones, how do you want to handle that? Do you have any suggestions?
I'll just take one.
Autumn, you want to, you want to wait for the last?
No, no, I'll just, no, I mean, again, the reappointment process was, I don't remember exactly what the first draft looked like, but it was different than this. I think it might have set term limits, but it did allow for people to continue to serve. Again, I will say it was city staff that said that this would be an easier way to do it. And so.
I will just, I don't recall that specific conversation, just to be clear. It's been a long time since we did that.
Psychically, I'll find my own candy.
He's not always right.
I am, I'm just being honest, I don't recall.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, Autumn, are you finished?
Yes, I, yeah, I suppose so. I guess I would just say too, that, I mean, if we're, I want to see something maybe a little more standard than someone finds somebody and talks to someone and they then.
Well, why don't we?
I don't know, like I think that's why we're.
So why don't we do this? If you're up for reappointment, instead of going through the whole process of an application, we receive a letter from the applicant or the individual stating that, because, you know, some people don't want to be reappointed, that get reappointed, okay? So why don't we, would you be happy enough with if, if your term is up, prior 30 days to your term, you submit a letter to council asking for reappointment? And then we go back to the authority and see if there's any input. Does that work?
No, that shouldn't work.
Larry, does that work for you?
I'm not sure yet. I'll let you know if it works.
Okay, Autumn, does it work? What I'm trying to do is to get this off our table and still have a process in place that it wouldn't make it easier for all of us if there wasn't a process. But again, you got volunteers, it's their time and effort. And let's make it as simple. But I also, very important that we have the input of the authorities. I think that's important, or the agency or authority.
Sure, so I think I am okay with folks who are seeking reappointment to forego an interview process and maybe just submit a letter or something. I guess I would wonder though, how that would impact, right, those other steps, right? So do we advertise the opening and are they considered one of several applicants? And are they, you know, competing and the, you know, fortunate scenario that we have more than one? Do they do that a lot earlier to give us time if they don't submit something? You know, so I guess I'm just wondering what.
Yeah, I thought the 30 days would give us time to, for them to contact us and give us their input.
I think 30 days would be a period.
So, I'm sorry, can you repeat? So it's 30 days prior to their.
The expiration of the point.
The expiration. And then, but that, does that give city staff enough time to do all the other pieces?
30 days, Andy?
I'm not sure I'm following the bouncing ball.
Again, like this was like a six-month process. And I don't want to condense it to like two weeks for.
Right, I mean, if our goal is to have a new appointment in place upon someone's expiry, either a reappointment or a new appointment in place upon expiry. I mean, if someone's not interested in serving or continuing to serve for a reappointment, then we would want to know that presumably far earlier than 30 days. Because then that means we would presume to have a vacancy effect of a date certain and then we would advertise.
90 days is too far out?
No.
What would work for staff?
You guys make the policy, we'll follow it.
Well, yeah, but I wonder would it mix it?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, I mean, 90 days seems reasonable.
I think if we do 90 days for the letter, they get it in within 60 days prior to expiration and then that gives 60 days of this process to. So it's two months for this to clear up.
Yeah. Is that all right? Can we all live with it? Okay, is there anything else in this policy that you want to discuss before I ask permission?
Well, why don't we get?
Yeah, we need a, we need a new draft and a new policy before we vote on it, please.
You're not going to get that through.
No, I don't, I don't trust any of you. I say affectionately.
Wait a minute, say it. We're going to be taking an ad out tomorrow. We'll pay for it. Okay, so Autumn, or whoever, can you get me a final draft for our next meeting that we can make a decision on? Does that work? Is that all right?
Yes.
That's what we're doing.
So I'm looking at Andy Walker, Katie, and I'm going to look at Autumn. Do we have enough between the three of us notes to capture any new draft?
Here's look around. Don't trust me.
Okay, wow. Just give me a second, guys. Okay, we're in the discussion adopting the policy and procedure of special events, park, shelter, reservation, pickings, drives, and Andy. Or, I guess that's your reading.
Yeah, I'll pick it up and I'm going to turn it over to Katie. So just again, pre-COVID by way of, so Katie, good luck taking notes and leading the discussion.
This is what I asked you if I was doing this earlier. You said no.
I did, I said you did.
Oh, you did.
All right, so whatever. I'll take the notes, you're going to lead the discussion.
You need my mallet?
So so just by way of circling back, right, pre-COVID, we had begun the process that had draft policies and procedures that we had discussed two or three times with council. Again, we're similar iterative process where we were sort of refining for new, around special events, park and shelter reservations, race permit applications, and then related fees. Apparently, I had miscommunicated with Katie because I was going to ask her to lead the discussion in terms of walking us through the policies and procedures that we had proposed.
Okay. So we had come before council in February last with these.
Why are you looking at me?
So what you have before you is policies and procedures for three of our current tenants. Special event permit, which is just a blanket one for basically any special event that occurs on city park property or right-of-way. Park shelter reservations, which are specific to our city parks. And race parade permit, which was not one that we had previously had in existence. It was covered by the special event permits. Andy and I felt, given the number of race and parade permits we do a year, that it would be applicable to have their own application. Most of this is just setting forth written policies and procedures that can be given to the applicant as well as creating a fee schedule that better covers the cost of staff time as well as city resources. We also took recommendations from our insurance company about requiring a certificate of liability insurance for any special event that is held. And we've also researched amongst other municipalities of similar size and in the region to be comparable with what they are doing.
B-words?
B-words, as well as rules, policies, procedures.
We're just in the discussion. So Andy, where do you want to go with this?
Well, so our goal, I guess, was, wasn't necessarily seeking action tonight. It was just taking the opportunity to refresh, bring it back, remind council where we were. We provided you what were the last drafts of the policies. And the cover sheet is really, is sort of the Cliff Notes version of what you see attached. We do change, as noted right, the barricade fee from $25 to $50 as proposed. That would actually be done also in the separate, is that included in the fee schedule as well, right under separate action? But it's also included here in the policy as well. Yeah, I don't know. I know councilman Roa had reviewed and I think had a question maybe about electric fees.
Yeah, for a special event permit, I'm suggesting you might want to raise that fee a certain amount. It's theoretically possible if you have a lot of vendors going to the max for an eight-hour event that you would actually exceed $50 per hour for electric. So if you made it 75 or 100.
Is that mainly on Chestnut Street? Is that where the electric?
Diamond Park and Chestnut Street. Chestnut Street at this point is very limited. There's, there could be three to five at most.
I think there's like two, maybe one or two working electric outlets on Chestnut.
So food trucks that we encourage to come to Meadville. So most of them would have to be around the diamond because of their power usage?
Well, they're not, they're not covered under these policies because that's a.
Unless they're part of a larger special.
Yeah, I mean, unless, if it was a food truck event per se, but anyhow, the vending of a food truck is done under the soliciting and transient retail change that we've already made in the fee structure. Many of them have their own power supplies anyhow, generators and whatnot. But not directly applicable here. I don't know what the fee schedule was in these transient retail ordinance right off the top.
Is that anything you saw, Jim, today?
Yeah, I had another, well, they changed the other question I had.
Yeah, we had a clarifier that Sean pointed out.
Are there any comments or questions for Andy?
No, it sounds busy.
Autumn?
Um, uh, no.
Sean?
Yep.
Can you guys get that together and we can have that at our next meeting to be approved?
We would have a resolution then. Jim, we'll give some more thought on the electric charge. I guess I want to, the challenge is on Chestnut Street. The, to me, depends on the size of the event, right? If it's one guy plugging in a something for hours versus a Thunder in the City type event, the draw is different. So we'll try and, we'll think internally for the next meeting of thoughts around the electric cost.
I think, yeah, I, I, I'd mark the mine at the 75 for the Gizebo. I mean, I imagine that that would cover what Jim was talking about. Can, is there thought to, I'm sorry, I forgot that, I have a question. Is there thought to where these would be? So are these only going to be physical copies? Will they be available online, like permit applications? So right now, all of our permit applications are available online as a PDF. We don't have them as fillable PDFs, but that is on the laundry list of projects, so eventually.
But the document itself, the policy itself would be on the city's card page.
So you could at least pull it up and print it out.
And so we could link to anything else that references, like an additional application or something like that?
Okay, so you got direction, right? Any other questions? Authority boards and commission appointments. Katie?
This is just, so in your packet then are just the same vacancies and council's aware. This is where we place them. There's a redevelopment authority. You had at last meeting with the two advocates for the redevelopment authority position, Jeff Young and Joe Tompkins, you had referred that to the redevelopment authority. The authority met and provided you a, just a cover letter summarizing the redevelopment authority's recommendation of appointment of Jeff Young. And then at your discretion, will you choose to make that appointment tonight?
So, you know what, Katie, I'm going to ask you a question.
The redevelopment, I have it.
You got it. No, because it's. To the public.
Yeah, I'm sorry, really.
Your honor, this is a letter from the redevelopment authority dated June 10th, 2020, under the signature of Mary Ann Manano, as the Director of Community Development. Dear Council at the Redevelopment Authority's Board, Redevelopment Authority Board's June 10th meeting, the Board discussed that council requests candidates to fill the currently vacant board position. After discussion, the Board unanimously voted to recommend attorney Jeff Youngs for the appointment to the Board. The Board believes Mr. Youngs' experience working with local businesses and the fact Mr. Youngs was born and raised in the area will make him a valuable asset to the Board. Additionally, prior to the appointment of Board member Jim Mialy in August 2019, Mr. Youngs was contacted and expressed interest in sitting on the Board at that time. If there are any further questions, please let me know.
Thank you. What are your counsel?
I don't think you're looking for a motion. I would move to appoint Jeff Youngs to the redevelopment authority board.
All right. I'll second that. Any questions? Roll call?
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
No.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Sterns?
Aye.
I move to appoint Joe Tompkins to the redevelopment authority board.
Second.
This is, I'd like to discuss this for a second. I really do think that, I mean, Joe, you've gone a little overboard on tackling rental properties, but I really want to see the housing thing get more interest on the redevelopment authority. And I just, I, I'm really interested in that. And I love the fact that you're here all the time and you're engaged. And I know you've been going to the meetings because that's what you do. And so I'd like to see you try, see what can happen.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
No.
Joe, congratulations. And we'll notify the board. Katie, can you do that for us?
Yep.
Under new business discussion, community development block grant, care to act? Andy?
I'm going to invite Mary Ann to the podium there. So in your packet then, council, we probably had a remote public hearing, whatever date Mary Ann will tell us, but to receive project proposals for use of the special one-time COVID-related funds. So in your packet, the top sheet is actually a city recommendation. Behind that is the number of the various proposals and narratives that were received. I think, Mary Ann, maybe you start there with the overall process of the proposals and then get to your recommendation.
Sure.
Good evening, Council. So on May 22nd, the city held their first public hearing for two different CDBG funding sources. The first one was for the COVID-19 response, the second for just the annual application. What we asked of the public at that meeting was that they could submit proposals for what they would like to see, how the funds were used. Two different deadlines for the COVID-19 proposals, those were due June 5th. And then they still have time to submit the annual CDBG application proposals until July 3rd. So what you have in front of you is all of the applications and proposals that we received for both funding sources as of June 12th. So some of them, you'll see listed as, yes, they're COVID-19 eligible, no, they're not. There's a combination in there. Then, as Andy said, you have the recommendation on how to spend the rest of the CDBG COVID-19 funding.
Do you want to review those projects, Mary Ann, and the recommendations and how that derived out in various conversations with those, with the parties?
Sure. So Meadville Medical Center, we've reached out to them to see if there's anything that the community or the city can do to support their COVID-19 response. They came back with a couple of different options. Much of it had to do with the renovations needed to make the hospital more suitable for COVID-19 patients. They also came, and this is in the original list of proposals, with a request for a CPR machine for their emergency room. Originally, we had thought that that could be an eligible expense, but DCE came back earlier this week to tell us that it was not. So we had to make some changes. And instead, we'll reimburse, post-reimbursed the hospital for some renovations they've already chosen to undertake. We've also spoken with CHAPS and Center for Family Services. As you know, the moratorium on rental assistance or rental evictions is coming up. So they anticipate some issues with needing more funding for that. We put that in there, as well as utility assistance. We've also allotted some case management funding. The case management funding actually comes out of all the city's administrative fees that we typically take from CDBG. This is because both of those entities will end up administering and making sure that folks meet the guidelines. Any questions?
So looking down through this, how, what was the total amount of money we had? Hundreds, what?
$193,732.
So approximately 100,000 of that is going for rental rehab assistance. Okay.
Not, not rehab, but rental assistance.
Rental assistance through CHAPS, family services. And then they do the program then? How's that, tell me how that's going to work?
So we're going to enter into a cooperative, we'll have to enter into a cooperative agreement with both CHAPS and Center for Family Services. This will be to satisfy DCED's request that housing, you know, will have to code, that they're putting folks in or giving rental assistance to, make sure that all folks receiving this money are, are their city residents and meet certain income eligibility.
Throughout the city.
Correct.
It's just not a certain part of the city.
Correct.
And I take it that, under CDBG, I'm going to be signing these?
Correct.
Right.
So those agreements will come before council as an agreement with each and probably a sub-recipient or similar agreement with Meadville Medical Center even?
Minus likely.
So that'll be lined out. And DQ?
So next steps, I mean, Council, you're welcome to ask questions, but essentially, these are, this, this funding would be included in the next public hearing on June 29th, only after which the application can be filed.
That's correct. So this, the CDBG COVID-19 application is due at the end of July. Thought with the state is always, the sooner you get an application in, the sooner you get funding back. So the second public hearing is held in tandem with the county on June 29th. And then there's a five-day public comment period, which puts it at June, at what, July 6th. So you will have already met, and we'll probably ask that you ratify submission of the application at your...
July 15.
Meeting?
Yeah, July 15.
Because the city will need to approve their application prior to the county commissioners approving submission of all of it. You remember, the city is now on behalf of, of the county. So they will submit technically the application on the city's behalf.
So I guess one of the questions I have is I do not agree on when the federal government and the state community started handing out money. I didn't agree on how that money was divided up, okay? I, I still don't, which I sent a letter on my, under my own name, because that money could have been used a hell of a lot more for people in this community than what was given out. I had to say that, it's been plugging me, and some money's been handed out. So I just want to make sure that if we're using this for rent help, that the right people get the right help and it's accountable.
So per DCED guidelines, they all have to meet certain income limits per household. I have the 2020 CDBG income limits, if you want to go through those. But that has to be well documented, they have to be residents of the city. And then all of that will get, all get a copy, the county will get a copy, the state will get a copy. And we get audited all the time by the CED to make sure that all of those guidelines are indeed being met.
And I just want to make sure the right people are getting the right help, okay? I mean, I had somebody tell me that they received funding and they went out and bought a $100 iPhone, and that's my tax dollar, our tax dollar. I want to make sure that money's going for the right use. So I'm going to be watching.
Fair enough.
Okay.
If we get this funding because of the disaster declaration, or put another way, would we have gotten it if we had not?
We would have, yes, because let's say it was federal funding through the CDBG program and, and by Pennsylvania Act, by common Pennsylvania action, they distributed according to the entitlement formula.
Correct.
So we would have received an entitlement allocation irrespective of our local designation.
So some questions I have around the funding to the medical center. I mean, I certainly want our medical center to be as equipped as possible and to be able to take all the precautions it needs. I was looking on my website, and the cost of a test is $199. And so I wonder if this reallocation of funds to reimburse payments they already made might be able to go towards make testing, making testing free and available to people, or if there's any portion of that money that might be able to make testing available to especially vulnerable, folks who are vulnerable to COVID.
I need to have further conversations with the county and grant manager about that. Purchasing tests is a eligible activity, but I'm not certain what the criteria then would be for somebody getting tested. Will they, to meet income verification, something along those lines?
Right.
So I need to check further into that.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the $199 is a stated fee, but rarely, if ever, does a medical center get that kind of money. There's probably about at least eight different levels of reimbursement, depending whether you have Blue Cross, Champus, medical assistance, Medicare, private pay, private insurance company, and all the rest.
A preliminary search for free COVID testing nowhere in Meadville comes up as a, as a site.
So there's, there's really no action, I mean, I mean, I guess the action, if you have fundamental disagreement with this, because this is what's going to be recommended to the county for the final public hearing, and there would be, there would be a public common process after which, but it would really be, these numbers would be the basis on which the final application would be prepared and submitted. And, and the cause of the timing, as Mary Ann mentioned, on July 15th, agenda might be an actual resolution to ratify the submission of the application that includes these numbers.
I'm okay with numbers.
Yeah.
I'm all right with numbers. I'm okay. I, I mean, I want to see people help, but I want to make sure it goes to the right people.
And per Councilwoman Roald's suggestion, we did reach out to beyond Center for Family Services. So Women's Services, CHAPS, the Housing Coalition, they were all notified and most attended the public hearing, and they were all given an opportunity to submit proposals for how this funding is spent.
One other question before you, you go. The utility assistance of the 9,000, sorry, for shut-off, I'm going to be honest, is that enough money set aside to help those people?
Yeah, that's not an answer that I have. That's the number that came from CHAPS.
That request came from them, and you'll see the breakdown, estimate to assist 30 families and an average of 300 per family.
I just...
I mean, we didn't make that number up, that was their request is what I'm...
Yeah, but we can change that number.
Well, if, these are the numbers in the budget that would be submitted, the project submitted. I mean, it wouldn't change once it's submitted.
No, but we can change it before it's submitted.
Yes.
All right?
Sure.
Okay, if we, if we submit this as written, are the agencies held to those amounts? In other words, can they take 100 or $1,000 out of the housing rental assistance and add it to the ability and vice versa? Or are they committed to?
They're, they're going pretty strictly help to these numbers. At this moment, there's kind of play with the rapid rehousing or utility assistance. The, the only fixed number is the case management number of the 9,000 plus, because that, again, that number comes from what the city typically takes for administrative fees, which is capped at 18%. So this comes out of our 18%. So that number has to stay, but the other ones can be fixed at this time, but once submitted, they're pretty...
Just, just so you know, Autumn pointed out, I did not catch it. Under family services, under utility assistance, there's an additional $4,937. I didn't see that. So they would either go to CHAPS or go to Center for Family, wherever the money runs out, and then go to the next one? How that would work?
Somewhat. The, both entities service different populations of, of folks. So you're, depending on if they qualify for one agency, they can go there. If not, then they're capped.
With the rental assistance, Joe, I'm just curious, you know, we've got $100,000 out there. Has landlords had that issue, did not have, and they were rent paid? I mean, is there...
Mortgage payment last week, but it's the 30th, they didn't have a good problem.
But, but just because the landlord's having the issue doesn't mean the tenant's having the issue paying. And especially in the fall, once we get the money and $600 a week starts coming from unemployment, I, I imagine we're going to see some struggle.
So does that go for mortgage payments too, or that's just strictly rental?
They are only dealing with rental assistance.
Okay.
And I will tell you that at this time, when I spoke with Center for Family Services, they had run out almost of their rental assistance funding, and there was going to be a six, five or six month gap.
I think they had something to, like they helped an additional 70 something families in the last few weeks.
That's what the money's there to do, to help, so just make sure the right people get it. Any other comments, Council? Thank you, good job. Okay, we have a resolution authorizing signatures for identification. Katie, you ready?
Sure, ma'am. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to ratification by Allegheny College and final approval by the city solicitor, as of her binding effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion, please. Motion. Second?
I'll second.
Great discussion, Andy?
I'm going to punt it to Gary.
Okay. Very nice to see you. I should wake up. Yeah, the college, this is related to college, the hall renovation project that's been on for quite some time. As part of that project, they are installing some additional parking and other curvy surfaces, which require a new stormwater management system, which will discharge then to, which actually does already discharge now to Park Avenue. This was something, it was kind of missed. Anytime the, the stormwater system discharges to a public, a PennDOT owned right-of-way, PennDOT requires the municipality to be the applicant for what's called the highway occupancy permit, which is required prior to any kind of construction within the PennDOT right-of-way. Am I being loud?
You're fast.
Okay. So what we then do, we, we would have then, of course, applied on behalf of Allegheny College. And then we require them this indemnification agreement to hold the college responsible for the connection and, and any issues that may come, come up in regard to that, that connection. So this then will cover the city and put Allegheny College, but then make them responsible for any kind of issues that may come up in regard to that connection. We've done this for Quick Fill, the new Quick Fill down at Park and Linden. I think it's maybe the third or fourth time we've done that. It just essentially transfers any kind of responsibility to the college.
Any questions for Gary?
So there's no cost for the city doing this?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Here, I'm roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
We have a final resolution recognizing Dave Alba.
Resolved, resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas David Alba has served as a valued employee of the City of Meadville Public Works Department for 34 years, and whereas Mr. Alba began working for the City of Meadville Public Works Department as a truck driver slash laborer on March 31st, 1986, and whereas Mr. Alba was promoted to the position of Assistant Superintendent of the Streets Department and began serving in that capacity on May 2nd, 1988, and whereas Mr. Alba moved to an equipment operator on January 1st, 1997, and whereas Mr. Alba has performed all the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, professionalism and efficiency, and whereas Mr. Alba has elected to retire from active employment with the City of Meadville effective May 29th, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that City of Meadville Public Works Equipment Operator David Alba is hereby commended for his meticulous dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to David Alba for every success in the future.
Motion, please.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments? Larry, start with you.
I didn't know him, but I, anybody that can make it to retirement, I hope you enjoy, enjoy.
Jim?
I was at his retirement party, and I, I think he's served the city well, and I wish him many years of health and happiness in retirement.
Sean?
Just congratulations and enjoy yourself when you get a chance now. Like Leroy is, now he's retired.
Autumn?
Uh, no, I thank Mr. Alba for his work and...
Wish Dave the very best in retirement. I hope you adjust to it. Sometimes adjustment takes a little bit of time, but you'll get to enjoy sleeping a little bit later. With that, I will ask for Councilmember's statement. Autumn, start with you.
You can just vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. There, you want a roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Probably happy we voted for that. With that, Autumn, I'll start with Councilmember's statement.
Uh, sure, I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight. It's always great to, to have people here. I, I, I want to, I, I want to say that I'm excited about some of the work that's come out of this meeting tonight. I think that we're starting to recognize the housing crisis that exists in Meadville. I think our appointment to the Redevelopment Authority and the new ideas that it brings excites me, and I'm excited to see what comes from that. And I think the assistance that we're recognizing is necessary for residents right now in our community and allowing that to, you know... and allotting that to, you know, empowering our, uh, local organizations that support those people to, to do that, giving them the resources that, that we're able to. So I'm, I'm glad about some of the things that came out of this meeting.
Sarah?
Yeah, I too am satisfied with some things that came out. I'm just gonna, I've got to get this off my chest. The meeting back last, the third, I believe it was, I was very confused the way it was handled. Because we had, we had stated that when we had brought the, the proposal, the petition, when Kirsten Ames was going to speak, we had Kirsten Ames speak for the, our petition, right? They were, the group that wanted, came, were told that they had to select one representative. When the landlord committee came or tenants came as a group, every one of them just about, unless they waved you off, continued to speak, reiterating the same thing. My concern and my, what bothers me is, and to some people, it seemed like they got special preference, that we changed the rules to accommodate. And I think it's very important that we as council, regardless of who it is, stick together and, and, you know, if you're gonna have one person speak to represent a group of people, then that's what we need to do. And that just, that just did not, it upset me. Because that was, that's one of the things that we need, that we need to show from council is that we're holding everybody and treating everybody as equal.
Well, that's obviously the camp, uh, the public. When you come to this public meeting, and if you want to speak at this meeting on any agenda item, you sign up out front and you, you, that's for everyone. So we do have a policy in place, we follow the policy. The, the one thing that we didn't do that, and I started this meeting off with it, is I did not limit anybody on speaking. I was elected to hear what the public has to say. I don't care if you agree with us or disagree with us. I don't want somebody going on and on, but I wasn't under the impression that there was a group of people. You have 200 signatures, you could have brought 200, they could have brought 200 people here, they could have signed up if they wanted to. Well, yeah, but my whole point is, anybody that wants to speak at this meeting, I, I've never, council has never stopped them from speaking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I must disagree. When Kirsten Ames came with that, with the form for policy and procedures and they called, she was told that instead of having everyone come and speak, you'd elect one person to represent and speak for the group.
And that's what our office told them?
I was, yeah.
Council's policy encourages that. The, the policy adopted by council encourages someone who, a large group, that a representative be selected for the same group. And that's, I would argue that's in, in interest of council's time, right? So you're not hearing the same repetitive message from 250 people that we support something. I don't think that's a good use of council's time.
And I agree with that, but I'm saying if you hold one accountable, you hold them all accountable. And that's, that was not, we listened to, I don't know how many people that you had on that list repeat the same thing, that they were against it for the exact, basically the exact same reason. That's my, my concern. Other than that?
Okay. We'll just follow the procedures that we've set in place. If council doesn't agree with the procedures and we take over the procedure, we change the procedures. But that's what we have. I'm sorry if you didn't agree. I didn't let anybody speak. I think I was pretty open with that one there. Jim?
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Um, just a couple of things.
Just one more?
Oh, I'm sorry, jeez. You could have put a flag up down there, you're so quiet all night.
Yeah, two behind you.
Yeah, just wave, sit a flag up.
Uh, first, I'd just like to thank Hillary Lee and Allegheny faculty for coming, explaining, playing on this fall classes. I, I am comfortable knowing that they're gonna do everything they can and I know that it's gonna change day by day and it's not gonna be something simple. As far as that last meeting and Larry, I knew nothing about any confusion about the speaking. I, I've always, the way it worked out was the way I thought it always came. I didn't know that anybody was told not to come. The list of your 200 people or 278 people, I know a lot of those people. There was an email they got and they just said yes. And it wasn't like they came and talked to anybody. So I mean, I don't, I mean, I'll, I'll hold that. But I would have gladly said okay on your COVID task force, but you had to take the housing out. And I mean, just one line, "and housing." And then if you came back to me and said, "Wow, we had a problem with housing, look at all these people," then I'd say, "Okay, there's a housing problem." But you didn't want to do that, you wanted it to be about the housing from the very start. And I said I, that's what I had my problem with. Because I know there's a lot of people who never got any money at all. I know there's a lot of people waiting and they need help, but they need help and we gotta find someone to help them and it's not that easy. I mean, if you call Brad Roy and Michelle Brooks' office, you call Andy, Andy likes to have phone calls, don't you? Well, anyway, that's where I'm at with some of that. And I just would say, please continue to social distance, wear a mask. It's just driving me crazy, but here I am not wearing one too. But in a store and in restaurants and it just, it's not over yet, even though some people think it is. That's all.
Oh, my statements. First of all, I do want to thank Allegheny College for coming down and certainly having an open conversation with us. And I, I really understand they, colleges are business and they have to run it as a business, but I also know that they really do care about the community and I appreciate that. I gotta tell you, the outdoor patio has really been kind of phenomenal. I've gotten quite a few calls.
Looks nice.
People are enjoying it, they're keeping their distance. I, I spoke to some of the businesses and one of the businesses is up 30% in sales. So I think we as council and the city really did a great job working with them under their request of having these outside patios. And even to the point of maybe we can look at that as a permanent thing down the road. If it brings people downtown and it gets them to, to, you know, make sales buys, walk into stores, then that's what we're doing. I'm also glad to say, I know it's CDBG fund, but this is still tax dollars, and I haven't cut this cake. A hundred thousand dollars is gonna go out there to help with those that are needing some help in the City of Meadville with rent utilities. I'm, I'm proud of that through the CDBG. I, again, I can't stress to you enough how I want to make sure it gets in the right hands for the people that really, truly need it. So I'll keep it number real close on that. With that, Dave, again, enjoy your retirement. You may keep busier than what you think. Need a motion to adjourn?
To executives, real estate and real estate litigation.
So, so...
Second?
Roll call? I'm looking for Mike Harley to make sure he...
Yeah.
Uh, Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
And if you don't mind, I'd like to have council be in that executive session quite quickly. My rubbish is coming and I have to get it out. So Andy, do you want to go to another room?
Yeah, we'll just go next door.
Thank you for coming tonight.